Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting of August fifteenth. If anyone in the audience needs some amp line headphones, please raise your hand and we'll get those for you. All right, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Well. Council member vote is absent this evening, so council member Sherman here, council member Gutierrez. Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Council member McDowell.
President.
And council member Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Your motion to excuse council member vote.
I move to excuse council member vote.
Second.
All right, motion to second to excuse council member vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I have one change. Item E two, the resolution number one, two, seven, nine, oh, seven, two, three. I'll be presenting that tonight to Director Hill.
Thank you. Any other changes? All right, council, have any board reports to share? I want to say we had another successful movie at the park. Thank you, Jordan, you and your staff for putting that together for us every Friday night and staying there till wee hours, getting everything taken down. It's pretty exciting to see a hundred people come out in our parks. Also, I wanted to say I attended the first annual Turning Point Domestic Violence Shelters Annual Resilient Run, which I ran. Found out today I came in thirty-second out of a hundred and fifty people. I thought I was gonna die for two days. But it's a great organization and it was really fun to run. So, all right, and that's all I have. Anybody else? All right. Is there one to review the item consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published. Second.
All right, we have motion to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, tonight we have a presentation by Amy Cooper. This is about our Forest Festival. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for your time. I'm here to report on the two thousand twenty-three Forest Festival event in regards to LTAC funding. People were ready for events this summer and we were so excited about the amount of people that came out for Forest Festival. Last year was our first year back to normal, but it was a rainy year, so this year was just completely amazing. We really felt like we were back. So with that, I just want to give you a quick report on each event. The Gold Spur Creek Run happened on the third, so that's the early morning event kicking off the Saturday of Forest Festival. We had entrance from all over Washington. They had over two hundred people enter to run, which was their goal was two hundred. So they met their goal. They were very excited. The Firefighters Pancake Breakfast fed hundreds of people before the parade. And the Paul Bunyan Grand Parade saw seventy-eight entries again from all over this side of the state. We had fifty-five vendors both at the at Loop Field for the logging show as well as for the car show, and that's an eighty percent increase for us. So we sold out our vendor opportunities and half of those vendors were from outside of county. And then we estimate that around a thousand people attended the logging show. This year, too, we had to pivot a little bit. Steel did not host our logging show, which is the first time in gosh, six, seven years. So we used a production company and it was a really seamless transition for us. So we were really happy with how that went. Let's see what else. Our carnival, what we were told by our carnival company that it was the best-attended carnival in Forest Festival history. And she attributes that to the location. So having it down at the old Mel Chevrolet lot, which of course is for sale, so we don't know if we will get to keep using that space. But having the carnival downtown where everybody can see it has just exponentially increased year after year with the attendance. Rock in the Forest saw a ton of people enjoying music uptown before the fireworks show and we estimate about twenty-five hundred people at the fireworks show on Saturday night. And then we had three hundred and seventy-five cars at the car show on Sunday. And let's see what else. The Kiwanis Duck Race sold out. They've got five thousand ducks to sell and they've sold out this year, and I know last year, too, they did. And then outside of Forest Festival weekend, we held the royalty party on July ninth, which is the garden party over at the Colonial House. It's a ticketed event. We doubled our ticket sales this year, sold out again, and we look forward to continuing to expand that event. It's become a really fun tradition for a lot of families, especially moms and daughters and grandmas. It's super cute. Our royalty court continues to be active. They just wrapped up Seafare. They're gonna be heading to the Autumn Leaf Festival in Leavenworth next month. And then we're gonna start all over. We've got coronation coming up probably in February. It'll be February or March of two thousand twenty-four. And we're planning our eightieth celebration. So Forest Festival two thousand twenty-four will be eighty years. It'll be a big deal, and we're also working on a new float. Yes, so we've got a lot of fun, exciting things happening. We're looking forward to bringing some new events to the eightieth celebration as well as keeping the tradition of all of our existing events. Any questions?
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, I just said it sounded lovely.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Finance Director Mike Ginn.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. We have the June financial report in your packet and for presentation this evening. The nice part, I think, about the June financial report is it's that fifty percent look at our fiscal year. So for budget preparation, for your purposes, and just, I think the public really gives us a nice measure at where we're at, especially since, as you know, we've been undertaking some real work on the general fund to bring those expenditures down a bit to match our ongoing revenue. So we'll be referencing it some next week at the study session, so I'll keep my remarks brief and just focus on a couple of areas. On page one, the estimated amount of variance between revenues and expenditures is reduced dramatically from where we were a few months ago. So that's taken a lot of diligence, as you know, on the part of city staff to really look at that. I won't say that it's been without pain, but we're bringing that more in line and it's easing our work a little bit on the development of the two thousand twenty-four budget, at least making that process, I think, a bit more focused in our ability to really dig into it with more data and knowledge of what's happening there. It's, again, it's due largely to the adoption of the supplemental budget in June that you approved and city staff watching and reducing expenditures. So if we move forward to page seven, this is where the estimated fund balances are shown. We're paying close attention to these as we work on the two thousand twenty-four budget. I think as I look at this, what I'm really interested in is where the funds are ending. Our beginning balance is we're from the total, we're forecasting a pretty sizable reduction, but that also shows that we're working on city projects, on important work. You know that that's happening based on some of the presentation at last week's study session about the two utility funds and all that's happening there. So everything's looking good. I was, I would like to point out, the solid waste fund has had a lot of activity the last few months with the C Street landfill. You'll notice we're projecting a fund balance of just over two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Public Works and Finance staff have worked diligently to make sure that the reimbursements as well as that documentation and working with the Department of Ecology is happening seamlessly because we're, you know, having to pay a contractor a good deal of money in payments and then we want to get that reimbursement that we have an agreement through the Department of Ecology and that's happening well. And as you can see, we're estimating that two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That'll be in there to continue those annual inspections of the site. So that's coming together nicely. It's not been without a few moments of concern on the Finance Director's part, possibly Public Works Director's part, too, but it's coming together and looking good. The citywide FTE at the bottom of page seven, it's updated as of June thirtieth, so this takes into account that supplemental budget. Some of the vacancies that are on there are filled because we're a month and a half down the road, but that's you'll notice with the reductions to finance the twenty and facilities, the two thousand twenty-three revised column shows that three point oh FTE reduction. So that's where we're at with that. And then the last pages of the report, nine through twelve, show an overview of citywide funds showing budget, revenues, expenditures, and again, through June, and then an estimated actual. Department directors have also updated that because they know things sometimes that finance we're just not aware of, particularly where some of the capital projects are and some of those expenditures are happening. So we're working diligently on the two thousand twenty-four budget to make sure we have all that in line and it's important for us in estimating where we'll be. So I'm pleased with where we're at and how we're really looking for that two thousand twenty-four process and bringing you some good discussion items next week at your study session on budget. So that's all I have for my comments on the report.
Thank you, Mike. Can you comment your questions? Appreciate the FTE information because again, when we're talking about the money we've saved, it's not necessarily that we've saved it. It's just we've had some vacancies that otherwise would be filled, so we gotta remember that and it's part of some of that. So thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
All right, the last presentation is the Water Use Efficiency Plan. Public Works Director Jay Harris has good morning.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Jay Harris, Public Works Director. So as part of the Water Conference of Plan Update, which you're gonna see in a little while, we are required by the state to come up with a water use efficiency program. And so, next slide. So what is the program? We want to use water efficiently. We need to meet future needs and we need to operate the water fund within financial, managerial, and technical constraints, and we need to deliver safe and reliable drinking water, and we appreciate everybody being involved in this plan. So the goal is to increase our water supply and allow water demand efficiency to both increase also, you know, over time as we grow. And so the goal is for people to use less water and also to have like less leakage in our system and that sort of thing. And that's through policies, resolutions, ordinances, bylaws, and programs that Public Works will operate. Next slide. So this is where the state of Washington says that we gotta do it, and so we have to do this because we're doing the new water system plan. That's what's coming for you next tonight. And so with that becomes, you have to submit a new water use efficiency program. So part of that program is you have to describe the current program and then you have to give some estimates of what you save off of the prior program. And then we have to document what goals and water efficiency goals and document the goals that were established previously. And then we just need to see if they are cost-effective also. I mean, you could like put out water conservation kits that we had with my last job and the showerheads that were put out were really cheap. And I don't think it was very costly. We spent, I don't know, ten dollars a head or something. And they didn't last very long. People always complained about them. So that's the type of thing that, you know, down the road, we might start implementing. But we need to make sure that whatever we put out, there's cost-effective. People are gonna use it and it actually meets some sort of measure. Next slide. So why should we care? So using water efficiently saves us money and the customers money. The less we use the water system, the longer it's gonna last, the less O and M operations and maintenance we have on the system. And if the customer doesn't use as much money, their bills are gonna be as high, obviously. And so we all receive value from our water supply. That's quality water supply and quantity. We need to make sure everybody does their part, so we have a good supply water for future generation. We need to make sure that our goals relate back to the needs of our specific system. I just can't adopt goals like Olympia system or something. Every system is unique. And that we need to make sure the goals work for our customer and the measures that we have support the goals. Next slide. So goal number one, the existing goals was to reduce total consumption one percent annually from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty. So the same goal's gonna be in effect, another reduction of one percent through two thousand twenty-nine. So we're trying to reduce total consumption and I'll get to the how in a second. So the distribution system leakage, the existing goal was less than eight percent from fourteen to two thousand twenty. We were somewhere around ten or eleven one year and we've been hovering right around the eight, ten, nine, seven, that sort of thing. Last year was six point two, so we did well. Just so you know, when you measure leakage, we know how much water we sell, right? And then we know at each one of our well sites how much went into the system, so you subtract the two and you know how much you've lost, the water you didn't sell, right? So the water you didn't sell could be meters that aren't reading accurately. That could be at the well site or that could be at the customer's end. You could have leaks in the system, which are pretty common. And anyways, like the fire department come out and use a whole bunch of water and not tell us about it on a big fire. We've had that happen a few. We need to account for all the water going out. That's why we have those hydro meters. I don't know if you guys know that program, but that's reconstruction. Just because of this, we need to measure what's going out as accurately as possible. So the, on the distribution system leakage, we had an eight percent goal and the future goal is stay at ten percent on a three-year rolling average. That's pretty much what the state is telling you. They want to keep you under ten percent loss in your total system. And then goal number three is to reduce residential water consumption. And in the last six-year period, they wanted to reduce it by three percent. We weren't quite there. We're not gonna move forward with that goal just because people are using quite a bit less water. About two thousand ten-ish, you saw a big decrease, and this was nationwide. People, when the economic crisis hit, people stopped watering their lawns and stuff, kept the grass alive with hoses and stuff, but the big water days were in two thousand six, those sort of things. If you go back and look at its historic use, since then, each customer's used quite a bit less water. Next slide. So measures and ways that we're gonna achieve these goals. So the AMI meters, it's important. These old brass meters are twenty-plus years old. In some instances, even maybe thirty years old. As they get older, the parts start wearing out and they stint slower. They never read more. They always read a little less, and so they're not measuring very accurately. We go out and bench test a sample of them and we're just finding that they're just not measuring quite right. So getting AMI done will actually measure the output in a little more accurately. Leak detection. So in two thousand twenty-two, we found two leaks. We estimated we saved about three million gallons. We identified four leaks and I, did you send that to the council again? In different areas around the city. We were out working on one of them already today. It was significant. Probably about another three, three million gallon leak a year. It doesn't take much water coming out of a pressurized line to add up to three million gallons. We also have real gravelly soil in this area. So in the Portland area where I came from, when you had a leak, we're in clay soil, it would come, it'd come out of the road. You see water shooting out a long curve and whatever. Something smaller leaks go into the gravel. You're not even aware of them until you set out the leak detection service. They can hear the sound of a leak with the microphones they have and can get us and enable these repairs. So we'll continue. Every year, we have a different zone of the city. We're gonna continue that. Continue improvements to the fire hydrant use metering program. That's important. And that's people using water without a permit. We're catching people quite often. They go up to a meter and just start filling up a water truck. And we inform them that, you know, you need a hydrometer and you need to go through the separate process. Fire department, working with them to keep doing better reporting there about their water use. The asset management program and GIS, so the GIS was kicked off. Asset management should be going live maybe late this month or next month, and with that, that will allow us to better inventory our asset and keep the maintenance up on them. And then the new AMI meters, once we're online with those, with the antenna, the fixed base radio read, we're a little ways out on that. But people will be able to see how much water they're using every month on an hourly basis if they choose so, and they'll be able to monitor their use more or less by hours, and I think that will help. Typically, AMI systems, when people are logging, people actually use less water when they're aware of how and when they use it. And that's the last, the historical and current use for each water account will be available. Probably about a year out on that, I'm thinking. Next slide. So then every six years for small water, if we change, doing a small water system management program. But if we change any part of the water comp plan, which I'm gonna show to you tonight, and go to the Department of the House to help, I need to update this with you guys again. And we go through this exact same process that I'm doing tonight. Next slide. And that is it. That is our I Pro meter, those being put in around the city. We got four hundred and something of them and now. And so you'll see it down in the box there with the little black thing. That's transmitter. It screws into the hole of the lid. So when you walk by, you see these little black pucks on top of the water meter lid. We're able to now walk by when we get done with that with a handheld data collector and pick up the water readings. We're only at ten percent of the system, though, and that should be changing here soon. I'll give you guys an update on that project. That's it.
All right, comments or questions?
Could you share with everyone what AMI stands for and what GIS stands for?
Yeah, it's Advanced Metering Infrastructure. And so what it is, is rather than the analog brass meters with a dial in there, that we have to pull the lid, look at it, and type in the number and hopefully type it in correctly. AMI will allow us to, one, do walk-by radio read with the data collector. It also sending a signal that eventually up on one of our water towers, we're gonna put an antenna in and it will go to the antenna and go right to the customer service console and the database will be laying there. So people can look at their data and then it's a geographical interface system for GIS. So and then GIS just explained what that is, is our water. All the lots and streets are graphically laid out. We can turn on aerial photographs, contours, turn on the waterline locations, hydrants, valves, sewer lines, that sort of thing. And allows us to look at the assets on the screen, so we're getting away from paper maps and going to computer maps.
Right. Anything else?
I think, well, for the goals of water consumption reduction, that we have no future goals. I think we should have future goals of having continued slow one percent decreases in consumption every year as a, as just a fixed measure of let's stop using so much and let's find ways to be more creative with our lawns. Let's not put so much chemical fertilizer and have all the runoff. Let's not. And let's keep our consumption at a level where it's not only sustainable but regenerative. And that's something I'd like to see is a, you know, future goal is to have gold. One, and to have a goal that's more aggressive than one percent per year.
Correct. We can look at that. One thing is, is like I said, in two thousand ten, people dumped down to the baseline usage, right? And we found over the last ten years, they're really not cutting as much. And so if I put a one percent a year goal in there, I'm worried we might not meet it. I think what we're gonna see when the AMI project's done, you're gonna see a small drop off because people can get online and they can see, you know, god dang it, in the evening, what are we doing? We're taking a lot of showers. We're doing things. And I think you're gonna see it sort of naturally through there, but what I'm worried about is we're getting close to the bottom, right? A lot of people have been replacing their toilets and sinks and valves because the older ones are wearing out, right? And so that low hanging fruit is starting to go away. And so staff was just a little worried about putting that in there and then having something that we didn't think we can meet because we think we're near bottom right now on residential consumption.
I have noticed not in, not in this presentation, but down the road in the comp plan, the water comp plan, that we have reduced quite a bit of water, it looked like. We'll probably get that eventually.
Yes, per ERU, we're down, and that's that two thousand ten adjustment that the whole United States saw.
All right. All right, no more questions and we'll move on to Parks and Recreation Director Jordan Primples has information for us about rehabilitation project for exterior of the Civic Center.
Thank you, council and mayor and deputy mayor. Tonight I bring to you the Civic Center exterior rehab project. So this project is designed to do some upgrades to the outside of this building. That involves cleaning, repairing, any siding, painting, staining, doing some five pond cornice updates. So all that, since mainly on the this half of the building. So front, I don't know my, my north and my south, so. But these three, not including the non-police side. And this project is also meeting one of the council's strategic goals under the community safety, referencing, you know, managing your assets. So this is big for us. Um, so we went to bid and on July twentieth for this project. The bid opening was after briefing information was due, so it's time to have some information on that for you. And we went to bid last Tuesday, August eighth, and we had six bids come in. Originally, this project was budgeted at ninety thousand dollars and after all bits were collected, the apparent low bid was with Riser Painting LSC, whose bid was at fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five, seven dollars and forty-four cents. And that includes both the base bid and the two alternative options that are discussed in the briefing. And then tonight, we're just looking to, you know, move it to the action agenda for action agenda, sorry, for September fifth for further consideration and potentially awarding the contract. And I can answer any questions.
Right. Do we have any public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place resolution number one, two, eight, six, dash, zero, six, two, three, including the additional object award form on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three action agenda.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
So we're only doing one end of the building?
So we're doing the front, this side and the back. So pretty much everything but the brick is on the list of getting fixed and repaired.
That end will not be done.
No. There's nothing on that side but brick.
Okay.
And some five pond cornice. So if that needs it, then that will do it.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion to second to place resolution number one, two, eight, six, dash, zero, eight, two, three, including potential addition of the project award forum on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three action agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, community economic, well, Mark is gonna take over for Jay tonight. Talked about consult, consultant services.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Filling in for Director Hill this evening. As, as you know, the city of Shelton, under the Growth Management Act, is required to update our comprehensive plan every ten years. And that is coming to fruition here very quickly as we have to have a new comprehensive plan adopted by June, the end of June in two thousand twenty-five. And as you well know as well, most cities don't carry this planning staff capable of executing a planning document such as this. So with the assistance of grant funds from the state of Washington, we are, we went out to bid, or actually proposals, our FPs for consultants to perform this work. Back on July thirty-first, we received two proposals from consultants, SCJ Alliance and VHC. Uh, back on July thirty-first, we received two proposals from consultants, uh, S C J Alliance and V H C. Uh, staff reviewed those proposals and came to the nas conclusion that S C J was the most responsible party. Uh, for this uh, this work, um. The city's allocated seventy-five thousand dollars this year. Uh, the grant from the State Department of Commerce is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And thirty thousand of those dollars will be through a cooperative agreement with Mason County. Uh, to work on the housing element and some other elements. Um, that are typically worked on cooperatively anyway. Uh, and S C J Alliance has been hired by the county at the same time, so we think we have some economy of scale there for this portion of the project, so. With your consideration, we ask that uh, this item, the contract with S C J Alliance be placed on the uh, September fifth council meeting.
Thank you, Mark, Donna, anybody sign up for a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on the comp plan? All right. But a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we forward resolution number one, two, seven, nine dash zero, seven, two, three, to the actual agenda on the September fifth council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, the second to forward resolution number one, two, seven, nine dash zero, seven, two, three, to the action agenda of September fifth. For further consideration, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Our next business item is a resolution to update signatures for the local government investment pool, finance director Mike Giddens and his details.
Thank you, we're bringing this resolution to you so that we can formalize and update to the signatures on this investment account to add. Um, the appointment of City Manager Seckler, I think we even need to update it. To put me on there, I can't remember if we have, so this will bring it to current status. The local government investment pool is managed by the Office of the State Treasurer. It allows local government entities such as the city to place funds that we hold in a safe and secure um. Investment pool that certainly um, follows all um. Required um, laws, it also um, gives us the benefit of some liquidity so that we can move the funds out. Um, when we need to with um, very little notice, and so that's the purpose of the L G I P, and we're bringing you this resolution. To update the signa, the authorized signatories um, on the fund.
Thank you. Donna, anyone sign up for the comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody like to speak on this? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to forward resolution number one, two, eight, one dash zero, seven, two, three, to the action agenda of September fifth council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
Thank you, comments or questions? Nope, all right, we have a motion, the second to forward resolution number one, two, eight, one dash zero, seven, two, three, to the action agenda of September fifth for further consideration, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, we're back to Jay Harris, Public Works Director, updating about a wastewater system comprehensive plan.
Good evening, Council again, uh, Jay Harris, so uh, the wastewater comprehensive plan uh, was, the prior plan was from two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, right in that range. You want to try to update those every ten years, hired Gray and Osborne to do that. And um, this is a wrap up of that plan. Um, so addresses the city's needs for wastewater collection, transmission, treatment, reuse system. And disposal for a twenty-year planning period, we go out twenty years, but the next plan is going to be done in about ten years again. So um, a couple of things uh, that we are looking at for the wastewater treatment plant and water reclamation plant. That we need treatment reliability and redundancy in our systems. Um, there's some new reclaimed water rules um, that impact the water reclaim uh, plant of how we can use reclaimed water. And how we store off-spec reclaimed water and that sort of thing. Um, with there's standards for the uh, protection of shellfish beds from pathogens from our main wastewater treatment plant, we've been watching that. And um, there's also nutrient restrictions um, that uh, new restrictions that are affecting the wastewater plant that we want to address. So long-term objectives of this plan is we want to improve in-stream flows in Goldsboro Creek. So up at the membrane plant, um, we send some re- reclaimed water out, a lot of it that will go to our spray field. It takes about four to six months to get into Goldsboro Creek for the groundwater modeling. But uh, during the summer months, we've been increasing the base flow of um, Goldsboro Creek, which is a good thing, especially as we get a little drier. Um, we're trying to minimize the discharge of pathogens uh, to Oakland Bay. And um, we want to try to reduce restrictions on shellfish harvesting. Um, also, we want to reduce nutrients, um, which are different than pathogens. Um, because we want uh, to maintain dissolved oxygen levels out there. And um, we want to expand the it, water reuse system in the city. And uh, we also want to make sure we're replacing our aging infrastructure and we will make sure we're reliable and resilient. Couple other things uh, that we need to expand the collection system and some of the wastewater facilities to accommodate growth. And that we want to try to make sure our fees are reasonable. Okay, I know they're high because we have the past debt and all that, but we still need to keep watching that, you know, uh, with with our rates, right? And uh, over time, uh, we need to do projects right. Ensure that the system is reliable, but you know, in the future, try to get our rates more in line. You know, with what other rate payers are paying, uh, you know, in the state of Washington. So uh, the PowerPoint slide, uh, some, some of the new things in the comp plan. Um, so we update uh, the land use, population projections and surface area characteristics, that's like U G A boundaries, that sort of thing. Um, we look at the current needs and any, any needed facilities that we need to add. Um, we need, we looked at all the infrastructure, you know, that's piping systems, lift stations, uh, force mains which are pressurized. And um, wastewater plants. Um, we look at flow and loading projections, so flow is water, loading is the solids part. Um, we looked at the comprehensive look at the collection system and including as we get I N I in the system. Uh, we looked at how we're treating at each plant. Um, and what we look at for the water reclamation plant for projects and look at the quality of the water, uh, reuse water that we're sending out. And then we came up with alternatives and recommendations and projects and a financial analysis, next slide. So some of the projects that we have, and I went over some of them um, a few meetings ago. But uh, some smoke testing is P eight uh, down in the middle uh, basin. Just to find some potential storm connections. Um, and uh, we think that we can probably get some storm piping disconnected from that part of the system. Um, there's a force main that goes across Goldsboro Creek and goes all the way up to the main plant. That hasn't been looked at in twelve years, we want to make sure we're looking at that. Because uh, if we have some issues with that line, we want to know about it right away and and do any needed repairs. Um, that we wanted to base in four A for I N I is coming up next, that's one of the bigger projects to reduce inflow and infiltration. Of groundwater into the sewer system, so we're treating water that doesn't need to be treated, right? It's because of old pipes and leaky joints and leaky manholes and cross connections from the storm system. That uh, the north of version lift station, we got done with the property purchase, we're getting ourselves set up for that. So we can take a good part of the norly parts of the city and run them in the future up to the membrane treatment plant. That way they're not going to the main plant and we're sending them up there. Uh, treating the water and then the water goes out to the spray field, back into the ground again and and supports Goldsboro Creek. And then um, there's some check valves that need to happen, uh, some uh, relocation, next slide. So uh, the weight main plant, um, that um, there's a bunch of uh, biosolves and treatment options that we need to look at there. This camp project is, it helps with the shellfish, it allows us to shore any off-spec water at the site. That project's almost done right now and is well under budget too. Um, there's a backup disinfection system and polymer feed system or other parts of that project that we haven't started on yet. Um, they need uh, another digester down the road, that helps with the solids handling, I was talking about. The centrifuge is for solids also, sludge storage building is solids. And then uh, how we transfer biosolids around the plant can be improved with conveyors and different pumps and that sort of thing. Uh, that's it, to help us out there, next slide. That uh, at the reclaimed plant and the water reuse system, um, there's a reclaimed water tank. Um, that we're going online, we hoped about to bid for that uh, sometime in November. I'm looking at the final plans for that right now, so that will be coming soon up to the reclaimed plant. That will allow us to store a bunch of water and as people need it and they want to draw down the tank, I, we can give them a lot of water. Um, that'll be important, especially as you bring larger users online, so it's good, we pump the groundwater out of the well, send it to the customer. The customer uses the water, it goes to the reclaimed plant, goes back out and is reused again, right? Rather than pumping more water out of the ground, we keep reusing uh, the same water, which works really good. The reclaimed plant has some uh, we have the headworks upgrade that's happening, we got a a three million dollar grant for that, that one A. We have um, replacement of filters in one and two and twenty twenty-seven plan. Um, these would be higher capacity filters that will give us um, some additional uh, capacity and treatment for now. Um, substandard holding affluent pond, we need to get that done for the state requirements, like I was talking about, they have some additional requirements. And so we'll have to hold any substandard water, we need to go to where we're infiltrating the water in our spray field. And do a bunch of improvements out there, we want to go to dry wells, right now there's sprayheads out there, we want to go to dry wells. Much more efficient to get water in the ground when you're putting it into the ground, not spraying it uh, three feet up in the air and letting it soak down into the soil. And then uh, phase two, there is an expansion of the plant, a little ways out, and that's to just give us more capacity, next slide. That's it, and that's a picture of the main plant as you're looking out into the bay, um, we flew the city helicopter over that. Just kidding, we don't have a city helicopter, that's a drone shot, I don't know where we got that from.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for a public comment on this exciting subject?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anyone, but he nodded something to talk about this, exciting subject, all right.
I have a question. So you're planning on reusing all that water?
Sir, can you come up to the microphone and tell us if you're from a city or county?
Um, my name's Thomas Wolf, and uh, just for the record, is this, uh, am I going to be able to speak on general stuff here? At the end or what, what source is that, because that's not on the list? Anyways, I appreciate your time and uh, well, I had a question about reusing the water. There's a lot, is this for drinking or is this for general use, like uh, putting into our agriculture, we don't really have a big agriculture going on. And we rely a lot on chains currently, and that's not really good for the environment and it's not good for us in case of a recession or anything, we are completely reliant on other chains. So when it comes to what we are using our water for, I think that there needs to be something said about how we are using it to make sure that we are sustainable in times of hardship. And uh, I know, I know that we need to reuse our water, I'm all for that, but there's also something to be said, is this, if this is drinking water, if people are going to be drinking this water. Then I would like also there to be tests done so that we can see whether or not this water is actually. Uh, actually friendly for us to drink, because there's national state studies that show that there is lithium and other things included into our local drinking water that is actually in our tap water. In our tap water, and if we are going to be reusing water, I think that there should also be tests done to make sure that they are not putting any sort of things inside of our water, or there's no contaminants. That are actually not supposed to be consumed. Um, that's what I'd like to say for this specific talk topic, but I would like to actually mention a few more things, my general comment.
Yes, we'll get to there, and if you want to leave your name and number.
I can just comment to that, uh, the state of Washington doesn't allow you to consume uh, reclaimed water. Um, it's a a a a whack, um, the Washington Administrative Code provision. And so uh, you can't do that, but the water is currently being used, most of it is being used by the state corrections facility. And they're using it for the laundry at the facility, so the goal of the water is a sports fields. Um, industrial processing, those sorts of things, uh, large irrigation, large users, so, you know. Putting it out to a residential neighborhood for lawn by lawn by lawn, the cost of that infrastructure far exceeds, you know, what you're using. So uh, anyways, it's it's not used for drinking purposes.
Uh, that's something I want to clarify, thank you.
Thank you.
If you need any more follow-up, just leave your number and name and what, so they pull up. All right. Anybody else in the audience? All right, do we have a motion?
So I move to. Um, resolution number one, two, eight, two dash zero, seven, two, three, to the September fifth action agenda.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, the second to forward res, oh, comment or question, sorry, I'm just, Council.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Uh, anyone take, wants to take a tour of the sewer treatment plant, it really very interesting. Very interesting, so, you know, Jay, um, I think I, it's been about eight years since I went, I'd like to go through it again. Um, but it's for anybody that wants to take a tour of it, it's open, very interesting.
I just wanted to thank Jay for the comprehensive um. Way he reset up our water for the future and how with the big plans we have for water, the quantity and the quality of the water. So I just wanted to um, put that out there that um, I appreciate, yeah. The the work and effort, sure, and to keep us in compliance, to keep our waters, they can clean for all different sorts of reasons, so thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We have a motion, the second to forward resolution number one, two, eight, two dash zero, seven, two, three, December fifth, city council meeting for. Further consideration, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. All right, Jay has another resolution to update the water system comprehensive plan.
Yeah, uh, good evening, Council again, Jay Harris, uh, so uh, the city of Shelton worked with a crill engineering on this one uh, for the water comprehensive plan. And uh, to meet state requirements, a lot of those are Department of Health requirements driven. So uh, some of the updates to the plan uh, that we defined the new retail service area, that's the city and the U G A boundary. Um, we described the existing water system, we uh, wanted to set the minimum performance criteria for each piece of the system. We need to put service, future demands on the service area to see how they performed. Identify any system deficiencies, have a capital plan again at twenty years, pretty common themes. And uh, we talked at the last meeting about some of those more year, near-term type of projects, how to finance and implement some of those uh, C I Ps. And then the water efficiency goals will be part that we discussed earlier, will be part of the comp plan also. So uh, next slide. So in the analysis uh, summary, you can see in uh, twenty twenty-two, um, the equipment residential units, it's a single-family home. Uh, we have about sixty-six hundred E R Us, it's projected in the next ten years, we're going about ninety-six hundred. That's addition of about three thousand E R Us, we're seeing that, right, on paper with land use and all that, so that's pretty, pretty accurate on their part. It follows uh, the comp plan and growth predict, uh, projections outlined in the comp plan. Um, and so our source capacity, we're looking good for the next ten years, those are the wells, those are the source. Storage capacity, been talking to you guys about that, we got problems, right? And um, so you go down into these tables and, you know, there's standby storage, dead storage, equalizing storage. And ultimately, um, we we need to improve our storage systems at the city, and I'll get to some C I Ps in a second on that, next slide. So here it is, that's pretty micro to read, but there's general projects that we need to do. Those are more maintenance projects such as hydrant improvements and repairing things, the next water system plan. Um, supply projects, we got to put a new well in in the next twenty years, not immediately, in the next twenty years. Um, and uh, do some uh, chlorine generation projects for the supply. Um, there's some pressure zone projects, there's one in Mountain View, there's one on Angle Side that we need to look at. Um, there's storage projects are the big hitter in in this uh, plan, I'll get to that in a minute, there's some pumping projects. And then there's a few, which I was surprised when the plan got done, that when they modeled it through all the pipes in the twenty-year period. We got some piping projects, but I thought it was unusual that we didn't have as many as I thought we might need. So uh, the pipes are older, but they were sized pretty good um, from uh, past folks, uh, next slide. So here's a slide of all the different project locations around the city, those are all in red. So you'll see uh, the different piping projects, reservoir projects, uh, that sort of thing on there. So you'll see uh the different piping projects, reservoir projects, uh that sort of thing on there. Next slide. So getting into a few specific projects here that uh there's a project to uh put a new well up in Angle Side. Angle Side was selected because it's getting to a farther part of the city. It's getting a little away from our well sites right now. Um that well might not be in Angle Side. It might be over near our well group now. With maybe some better pipe and improvements and that sort of thing. But for now, uh the consultant put it over there. Because it does give us redundancy on this side of the system. Next slide. That's a long ways out though. Um Mountain View needs some more storage. Uh the plan calls for three quarters of a million gallon storage for that pressure zone because we are deficient. Um it's likely that the uh it used to be called Peacock Ridge, was called Olympic Heights Development. Will probably be helping us with that project and is likely that reservoir might be on their site too. Um that up in the angle side pressure zone, there will be a second reservoir there. That's project S T O two. And then uh upper Mountain View uh needs, we need to complete that with one more reservoir up there. That's uh the elevated reservoir you see up by the county shop. Um there needs to be a second one put in there. Next slide. So in the pressure zone, uh the Mountain View pressure zone um needs some improvements. There's some people, some lower pressures in the zone. There's a bunch of dead storage in the Mountain View tank also, and we're gonna bring in high pressure water from upper Mountain View. And uh get those people on that system to take away the dead storage in the Mountain View reservoir. I've talked to you about the angle side uh pressure zone. We need to study on it. And then uh we need to take the dead storage out of the angle side tank, and that's gonna be pretty immediate, like probably. A year from now will be under construction on that one. So I'm really trying to move that one along quickly. It's our number two project that we're working on right now. A number one is well one to high school tank. This been underway for quite some time. And uh that's to get that two mile pipeline project out on the street here in the next couple of months. Next slide. And then some of the pump stations uh need to be improved. That's the angle side station needs to be improved up there. That's the existing station. Uh we need to uh replace some pumps and put in some additional telemetry between some stations and replace some pipes and that sort of thing. Uh Capitol Hill, um that project is to remove the existing tank. I know it sounds a little odd, but. That tank, we can't turn the water over in it because it's a large tank, but there's not enough customers in there. So the current plan calls for removing it. We think we're gonna actually run high pressure water and keep the tank. Fill it up and cascade it back into downtown. We the plan is just like a point in time, if you know what I mean. And as we continue to model our system, uh we look at different opportunities there. And then uh that uh the Mountain View uh booster pump. That off of the big reservoir that we're gonna put in, we need to send water back up to Mountain View again. So uh that's what uh P S O three is. Next slide. And then there's a bunch of fire flow deficiencies, which again is not bad for this size of city. A lot of that is six inch pipes is sort of the common theme that uh residential fire flow has gone up to a thousand gallons per minute. Uh back into the prior plan, it was only seven fifty. It jumped up in in the international fire code. So um six inch pipes are pretty much the common theme there. And uh we need to go to eight inch pipe in the vicinity of hydrants, especially hydrants that have lower pressure already. You just can't get the water through them. Uh next slide. And that's it. That's a picture of our elevated tank up by the county shop.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, anyone set up for public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Would anybody else like to speak on this?
What's up again? My name is Thomas Wolf. I just want to address what you said earlier about being able to uh. Monitor water usage. Is this for every single citizen, every single citizen in this county? And you mentioned something about uh being able to uh shut it off or turn it on. You said turn it on. Does that also give you the ability to shut it off too?
Mayor?
Can can we just? Get back with you on that. We don't normally have a back and forth.
Oh, well, I I was just a little concerned when he said that you have the ability and you were installing signals and relays. And you have the ability to turn it on, which also means that you have the ability to turn it off. And that is, and with with the way that things are going, you know, it seems like more and more people are getting taxed and none of these problems are actually being solved. Uh it's just a general issue that I see going on in this community. We we sat here for forty five minutes, uh forty five minutes listening to slide after slide. But I don't really hear solutions to any of the current issues. We are fixing a few things, yeah, but the overall line issues are still here. And I do not see them being fixed with we are with the current plan. And I see you installing more monitoring system, which is cool if they're under the right type of guidelines, but when you mentioned that you can turn them on. Like I said, it also means you can turn them off and that gives you more control over this area and the people that are using the water supplies. And we do not need to be restricting people more and more and more taxing them upon taxing them for things that are not really being solved. Uh that's just my general consensus on this. And when it comes to the water supply and how we plan on utilizing it. I really want to emphasize that clean water is absolutely essential to all life and living beings. And if we are not taking account for what type of water we are supplying to citizens here, we are opening ourselves up to a lot of different issues. Mainly health problems and. We are, I don't really see how any of this is actually gonna help us long term for things that we truly need in this community. Besides just fixing a few problems and just waiting till next time to talk about it again. Anyways, that's my comment for this. And uh when you can, I'd like a I'd like a response on whether or not you guys are able to shut them off as well. Because I do think that that is something that everyone here needs to know.
Thank you. Just leave your information after the meeting and we'll. Anyone else? All right, do a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we forward resolution number one, two, eight, four, dash, zero, seven, two, three to September fifth. City council meeting for the action.
You jump down. Go go up once. You're um we're on the water.
We're on the water.
Comp plan, you. He's down here. He was on construction.
Oh, one, two, one, two, eight, four, dash, zero, seven, two, three.
Yeah, you said one, two, eight, four.
Right. One, two, eight, three to the action agenda on September fifth.
Okay, we get that. I'll second that. All right. Comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to forward resolution number one, two, eight, three dash zero, seven, two, three to September fifth, city council dinner for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Post motion carries. All right. We have one more. This is from Jay.
Good evening, council. Uh the design and construction standards, uh staff has been working on this since I started here. And um chapter one, chapter two um is what we worked on. Uh there's a few other chapters that still need uh some work down the road. And um chapter one says general provisions. That's how we issue permits. What we expect for you to submit, um you know, bonding requirements for public improvements, that sort of thing. Uh chapter two is the transportation chapter. And so a lot of that is when a customer came in with a development proposal. We had a hard time trying to evaluate the proposal and tell them exactly what they needed to build. And so I met with council a couple of different times in study session and uh talked about those items. And uh I think the new standards manual, which we've been running in beta mode in the last month or so. Is uh it can address a lot of those problems. Uh next slide. So I'm gonna go over real quick the street system for the city. So we have arterials. We have um uh collectors, minor collectors and local roads in the city. That was from the two thousand seventeen comp plan. We're gonna see a different map in twenty twenty five, probably gonna be similar to this one. You can see the dash lines that show the future collectors and that sort of thing. Very helpful document to get people around the city, but I need to have standards for all the different types of roadways. Next slide. So here's a picture of it. Uh the arterial um is up there on the right. You can see the freeway. That's one oh one. And uh all the way down to the local street, that's one of our uh the current local streets, one of the newer ones. Um that has a curb tight tight sidewalks. Uh next slide. And so some of our, the documents we've referenced is um our our full comprehensive plan from two thousand seventeen. We might need to make some adjustments to the street standards in twenty twenty five with the new comp plan. We also have the municipal code title twelve. Um international fire code was a big player here. That's road width. Parking gradient paving types, those sorts of things, hydrant spacing, uh cul-de-sac radius, those sorts of things. Um Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual is kicking in pretty hard with our new standards. We look at that. And um anyways, uh then the older design and construction standards, obviously. Uh next slide. So this is a little matrix. We met with you folks about um staff hasn't made any changes to it. This is for infill development. So infill development from what we talked about is those people with less than a hundred and fifty feet of total undeveloped frontage. That they'll have a little different standards for anybody that exceeds a hundred and fifty feet, that they'll have to put in. Uh more more street requirements. This matrix allows people to go through and sort of sort out what's in front of your site. How much frontage do you have? What do I have to do? Um it's been sorely missing at the counter. And uh staff is gonna actually do more of these for some of the other processes in the future. Next slide. So this is a copy of integrated vegetated swales um that um with the street. These slides are pretty green, pretty enhanced. You know, if you went and looked at these on a day like today, I don't think they're gonna be that green either, right? So um but they do look nice in the spring into the early summer. And then in the winter, those sedges and rushes do come back. But that's what we're moving towards is a planter strip, a separated sidewalk. A a place for you to park your car, obviously, um and street trees. Our older standards didn't have any street trees. And they offer so many benefits that I listed there. You know, this the shading is one of the bigger ones. Um the shading allows, if you got a little bit of a rain in the middle of the summer, that little bit of water gets really hot really quick. But you can cut the temperature of that water by twenty, thirty degrees if pavement shaded uh near the tree. Next slide. So the street cross sections, if you can see on the right, we're gonna sort of look like that. Um those are the select Cleveland players. Uh this is a picture of Walton because we really don't have a street local with street trees on it. Um with wider sidewalks. So our trees, this is, those trees are probably twenty years old. You're gonna see that sort of thing. A major collector, we talked about putting a median where there is no left turn lanes to just sort of make a little bit better. It actually makes you drive a little more pleasurable, but rather than having just a straight turn lane where there's nobody turning, right? We talked about that and um having trees again helps shade the pavement, helps us with our our stormwater requirements. Uh next slide. So other things that we're doing in engineering, so um you know, you guys have your strategic goals that. Um you know, we want to clearly define uh the future. And so um we're using the intergov uh online permitting system. And uh we've been online for about a year now. We've probably done a hundred permits, at least issued today. I know just on the right away permits we have. Um the building's done a bunch of permits and that sort of thing. In the future, we're gonna start getting you guys monthly updates on. Permit volumes and that sort of thing, so we can sort of track those. Uh we've done, we've improved our form management in the engineering divisions. That's with modification requests, the easement forms that went through the city attorney. We have an intake checklist. So if you give me a set of plans. When you give them to me, you're gonna check that all these things are sitting there, so I don't have to sort through and get back to you three days later that you're missing five things. That we expect them, you know, right when you submit. The design consultant sees all that and it improves what they send us and it improves our response time back to them. Site distance certification and a bunch of U G A forms. Um that we did a small development stormwater manual, which has really been good for the single family home permitting people. It allows you basically a matrix you go into and it tells you what you need to do. Rather than giving them a stormwater management manual and saying, hey, good luck, folks. Uh go get what you need out of there. Um that staff worked on that. Um our G I S system, like I mentioned earlier, with the utility layers. Historical uh historical aerial photographs, our contours, we'll have our asphalt in there for easy reference. And then uh we've improved our group meetings with community development, building department. Um with engineering staff, with maintenance staff of just integrating a lot of different people into the development loop. And um we've improved uh it's really well with uh bringing in outside consultants to look at water capacity. Geotechnical studies, that sort of thing. So um upcoming in the future, so we're gonna have um the easements in G I S. So we'll be able to find those. Those are the legal right, you know, for sewer line and that sort of thing. We'll be have those at our fingertip. Um that the new video truck that we purchased, that online will be able to look at the actual video of a sewer line. So if somebody wants to connect to it, I can go evaluate downstream a little bit and make sure we're not gonna have any problems with that new connection. And um we're gonna field survey in the G uh the G I S assets. We're a little more accurate. The system right now isn't, they're not. They're in there, but they're not like within a few feet. It could be five, ten feet off in some instances. Um we're gonna put water meters and street signs into G I S. They're not in there right now. And um that with that, we can use our enterprise asset management system to start assigning work orders to street signs. I'll know how many times every five years that particular stop sign gets hit, for example. And that means I might have to just move it over there or do other things, that sort of thing. Um we're gonna add more forms, simplify float flow charts. And then we have a goal for the public to see the online utility mapping. So they can get a good idea. Do I have a water line in front of my house? How big is the water line? Where's the nearest fire hydrant? Um those s- sorts of issues. Uh next slide. And that is it.
All right, thank you, Jay. Donna, anyone set up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this?
Gained you a lifelong racing county member. Thank you. Uh street trees. We sat up here not too long ago and had a conversation about trees. Uh and if you remember, we had trees that were buckling sidewalks, trees that got too big for their areas, trees that had root damage. Uh trees that we had to take out because of life expectancy. So we have some liabilities with these street trees. So I just want to make sure that when we have a change in administration or we have a change in council members. That we go back and we look at this stuff to make sure that we're not gonna make a mistake with the type of trees and what we're gonna do with it and just make sure that we're aware of it. So that we don't end up coming up another five years and we're taking trees out that we just put in. So let's be aware.
At the end of the meeting, I gotta answer so that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we report resolution number one, two, eight, four, dash, zero, seven, two, three, September fifth.
Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, actually, Jay. I know several study sessions on this issue, what, four, maybe? Four, five, two, four. All right, but thank you for all the hard work.
Welcome.
And the council for uh putting all their input into this. All right, we have a motion and a second to forward resolution number one, two, eight, four, dash, zero, seven, two, three, September fifth, city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. All right, Finance Director Mike Gettin, some information for us about updating the fee schedule.
Yes, thank you. The resolution to update the master's fee schedule primarily to bring in the animal shelter. Um fees more in line with actual expenses, hasn't had any changes from the presentation two weeks ago.
All right. Uh Donna, anyone set up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on this? All right, may I read the resolution number one, two, seven, eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three?
Resolution number one, two, seven, eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, updating and establishing the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I heard we adopt resolution number one, two, seven. Eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three, I present.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution one, two, seven, eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, motion carries. All right, we are now Park Recreation President Jordan Crumples has information for us about Pacific Center Rotating Art Gallery.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Tonight I bring you recommended artwork for the next rotation by the Shell Arts Commission. We did a call to artists. Through different resources of media, we'd have deadline of July twenty eighth and we had a total of seven artists submit proposals. The Arts Commission met on August first to jury those art. And then tonight we bring you the recommended art to be potentially installed August twenty ninth through November thirtieth. For, sorry, excuse me, five artists. Between acrylic artwork, photography, some oil colored pencils. We do have one youth in this installation, which we're really excited about. So yeah, and we're just looking for approval tonight.
Thank you, Jordan. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak on this? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement of the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I wanted to say that the blue dragon was my favorite. And I was really, I would have been kind of dragon. So good job, Caitlin and all the other artists. Is the bunny and the rainbow leaving the rotating?
That one will be leaving this current rotation. Yep.
So I just want this program and hope that more artists come out and show us what they have.
Thank you.
So they can show us what.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. We have a motion in a second to approve Shelton Arts Commission recommendations for placement of the Civic Center Art Gallery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. All right. We now have a resolution for the front street paving project of a worse shade. Harris has details.
Jay Show. Okay, I promise the last one. So good evening, council. So we have an interlocal agreement with Mason County Public Works that allows us to request work supplies or equipment from each other. It's vice versa. We did a bunch of grinding for the county a year and a half, two years ago. And they came out and helped us on Front Street between Coda and Neeland. They have a bunch of trucks. They have a bunch of rollers. They have a paving machine. Okay? So they came down and hit it hard. We got all the prep work done. And it was, they came in and paid Front Street for a significant length, length for us. And they sent us a bill for forty five thousand dollars. The city manager has a low signing threshold, thirty thousand dollars. So we're coming to you folks for approval of that. And then if you look at the council agenda briefing, you'll see the pictures of the finished road. I don't know if you folks have driven it or not, but the before and afters are significant that that road was in pretty darn bad shape. So good thing for the city. Thankfully, the county, you know, gave us a couple of days of their time and helped us out. And I really appreciate them and we actually owe them favor now that, you know, we're sort of flipping back and forth. So I'm waiting for them. They got a bunch of culvert replacements that they have to do for fish projects. And so we're going to come in and drive out, maybe do their flagging form or their traffic control or, you know, send three guys sort of thing for a couple of days. And so I'm looking forward to continue building the relationship and working with them. And then this is one of those single touch type of things. I need to pay that invoice. And so the motion hopefully is proper for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? All right. Mayor reading a resolution number one two eight five dash zero eight two three.
Resolution number one two eight five dash zero eight two three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, approving and authorizing payment for the front street paving work conducted for the city of Shelton by the Mason County Public Works Department.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive the three touch rule and approve the resolution as presented. Maybe the number one two five dash zero eight two three.
Second. Thank you. Comments or questions? Yes.
I think this is one of the smartest things we're doing is partnering with the county on these projects. They have the equipment. We don't. We need help. They, they're there to help. So I'm just in immense benefit, benefit to the city and the county.
Thank you. Anything else? We have a motion in a second to waive the three touch rule and approve resolution number one two eight five dash zero eight two three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. We are now at city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A short report for you this, tonight. First and foremost, I want to convey to the council the positive clean audit that we received today from the auditor's office for the ARPA funds, federal funds through code relief. I want to recognize Terry Schnitzer, Don Kwesmi and Mike Givens for their hard work in this. Not only was it a clean audit, but it's such a clean audit and we were so responsive to the, to the state that you know, it reduces the cost to the city and, and what they charge us for the size they have. They actually charge us, yeah, to come in and out. So, yeah. So we can, if we do our jobs properly, we're consistent, proactive, we can save some money on the backend these processes. So I think financed for all the hard work there. I will be attending the Washington City and County Manager Association conference this week, so leaving tonight. And looking forward to some sessions on legislative priorities throughout the state. Our state fiscal forecast as well as other communities' reaction programs regarding homelessness and activities surrounding that. So be a good opportunity to connect with other cities in this state and see and counties. And get some information from them and see what they're doing out there. That's, that's helpful. Maybe share some things that's, that are really positive here, city of Shelton as well. Also want to recognize the first meeting of the subcommittee, the council subcommittee on homelessness. Councilmember Sherman, councilmember Goodier, and councilmember McDowell and myself met on Monday. Went through much of the list that was presented to council last week, put together some action items that I'm currently working on. Will continue to refine those and bring some recommendations forward to the full council here at a later date. So don't have a timeline for that yet. We'll, we'll continue working on that, but you'll see some of, some of those options, I guess, presented to you at a later date. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments or questions for the city manager? All right. This time, members of public are invited to make public comment on any topic that was not listed tonight on the agenda. Donna, do anyone sign up for public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first person is Thomas Wolf.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. Tonight I actually have a few things I'd like to go over. I actually come from Seattle and I live here in this community now. And one of the things I'd like to address is this becoming a mini Seattle, which is actually a really big problem. There is a lot of things going on with the homeless. There's a lot of people that are currently addicted to drugs. But the main problem is the cost of living is actually going up and no solutions are being had for this. So when the cost of living is going up, there's no solutions for anybody that doesn't actually have the means. And there's not enough jobs in the area for anybody to actually get a job and actually pay for a place. Because like I said, it's like two point five to three point five times the amount that you actually are making. So unless you, and amount of rent, so unless you actually freaking like have two jobs, good luck finding a home in this area. And, you know, and this goes for all across Washington, not just this area. Seattle's way worse than this. And there, there's, there's no way that we still don't have a stoplight or some type of stop sign on State Route three. There are so many accidents on that road that is becoming a serious issue that people need to address. It is very dangerous. We have people that actually live off that road. And there is just car accidents all the time on the road. It is getting more dangerous by the year. There is a lack of things for kids to do in this area. So they turn to drugs. When you have nothing to do, how are you going to spend time? And we are not addressing any of these issues. We get a budget report and none of them address the actual problems that are going on in this community. There is nothing for kids to do. There is a few after school programs, but that is basically it. And then you have the rest of us trying to pitch in on our own time and on our own dime and on everything, trying to take care of these kids because they deserve that. They are our future. They are literally who are going to be here after us. And we don't, it seems to me that nobody seems to care about that. They are our future. We are not taking care of them. So we are not taking care of our future. There is nothing going on in this community that says that we are addressing these problems. Instead, we slap a Band-Aid on the issue and we call it good and we wait till the next thing. And another thing I'd like to mention is I went over your entire report and this is like three hundred and seventy something pages, actually more than that. If you want people to actually deal with problems, why don't you give us one single page to address? And then we could deal with one problem at a time as a community instead of going over this entire stuffed list of things that we don't even get to everything. It's not by the time it look, like by the time we even get here, how long we've been here, an hour and twenty five minutes. And most problems have not actually been addressed. We have talked about slapping Band-Aids on issues. And the, the, how much money is being handled? I mean, can't you ask the community for help if you're seriously out of funds? This is an amazing community, way better than Seattle. And if you asked us for help, you could save the cost on a lot of different problems that we are having because the community would get involved. There is so much that I'd like to say that I don't think I have enough time. But I'd like to also mention a few more things since there's a whole bunch of people that have actually been hitting me up and talking about the current problems in this, in this county and.
Thank you.
Well, either way, what I said stands and I'd like it to be taken into a notice that there is not enough for these kids to do. And there's not enough safety precautions on State Route three. And this, these, the entire list that you give us is way too long. If you want us to address issues, they need to be one at a time instead of three hundred and something pages.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dean Jewitt.
So I just want to reach out and say thank you for what we do have going on and the subcommittee. I definitely appreciate it. We're dealing with some stuff that I've been talking about for several years. I wish it was a little sooner. But it's here. So what I do kind of want to use, I'm going to use a football analogy. Let's take the ball all the way across the goal line. Okay. If we have a committee that's working on this and we're going to work on Brewer Park, for instance. Let's also work on things that you guys are all very well aware and very well versed on what I talked about. We have a no lay lie ordinance. We need to enforce our street camping ordinance that we already have. We need to enact a shopping cart ordinance. And we need to treat all parks the same. We can't just give a park that's owned by the community, for the community and just give it away and have it turn into a bicycle chop shop. I'm sure the mayor and the deputy mayor already know because I know that there's some conversations involving them. And this chop shop that we have going on, it's, it's embarrassing. I would, I, I, again, I would recommend that you guys take a tour and go look. And if you don't know where to look, just ask me for a ride. I will take you to those spots and I will show you and I will point them out for you. Because it's, we, we all need to see it. If we all see it. You know what? Miguel and I probably don't agree on a lot of stuff. Joe and I may not agree on a lot of stuff. But I think that you guys are all sitting in these chairs for a reason. Okay. You want to have some community service. You have some civic pride. You know what? It takes a lot to get, to fill these positions for the stipend that you get. I understand it. But, you know, so far, just the last two weeks, I've had three people trespass from our property. Not sure if y'all took a look at that video I sent you of the individual that went sideways on his backpack with a steel pipe and a butcher knife. That's pretty scary and it was stashed behind my, my dumpster in my alley. Not, not even a half hour later, there was another individual that went there. And he was just released from the Mason County, the, the jail. He left his, left his evidence bag and his butcher knife. What happens if one of your kids worked for me at my food truck? And was in that dish pit and came out when he was in that manic episode? So these individuals are unsafe that we have around here. We need to do something about it. And if they're unsafe and we can't incarcerate them, well, we certainly shouldn't, they shouldn't be unsafe and be in our streets. We need to do something. Let's get this ball across the finish line. Let's take it all the way. We have the ability to do it. We're going to be breaking other camps apart. They're breaking other camps apart in other communities. Let's take some of those and let's use them. Thank you.
Anyone else sign up, Bill?
Yeah, we have one person on Zoom and that's Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Inesco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. Just to give more information, because I think it's important that the citizens understand what we as homeless providers are up against. I'm sure you're all aware, there was a housing assessment that was done by FCS Group in Mason County. And there currently are three hundred and twenty six units needed for government assistance. So people that can't earn enough money, like the gentleman spoke about earlier. They're currently in need of three hundred and twenty six units. For people that earn sixty percent AMI and greater, which could be teachers, could be firefighters, police. Those units needed are three hundred and seventy six. So there's two instances where we need housing to start with. Add to that the homeless count for our area, which is currently three hundred and eighty one individuals. So when people wonder why the homeless count continues to escalate in our area, it's simply a matter of housing. We don't have enough to meet the need. And those providers that you have that are working currently in Mason County, just so you all understand. The funding that we are competing for in this area belongs to what's called a continuum of care. And there are five large ones, which is Spokane, Clark, Pierce, King and Snohomish. And all the other counties in Washington are in the balance, which is called the balance of state. So for Mason County to get funding for these projects, it is a highly competitive environment. And we have to have a very strong need, which of course we do, but the need is great throughout all other counties. So I'm saying to you that there are solutions to this. Part of it is funding for the city through CDBG funds. That's an application process that we can participate with the city in to get more housing or at least get some restructure of current housing. There are developments we can do with tax credits as people who are providing housing for people who are needing permanent supportive shelters. And also the Mason County Housing Authority is, isn't there. It's the Bremerton Housing Authority in Kitsap County that manages it. So when you add all of these layers together, it paints a picture of how difficult, excuse me, how difficult it is to get things accomplished as housing providers and as homeless service providers. One of the things that I know that has been given out lately is that when you build new housing units, what it does is it frees up the older housing units that are currently being competed for by higher earning wage people. So the more new units you build, that people like the firefighters, police, those can afford. They go back into those higher level units and then it frees up the lower level units for people who need them so that they can afford them. So it's all tied in together. Thankfully, you have some really talented homeless service providers that are in your town that are doing the work. And grateful that we're all working together. We met today to discuss our plan for Brewer Park. We are working on a plan and I'm just grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in public comment, Donna?
I don't have anyone else signed up.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak on public comment? All right. Does the council have any new items for discussion tonight? All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, September fifth at six P M. We also have a study session on the Tuesday, twenty, August twenty second at six P M. And this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty eight P M.